I don't know, I can hear the mayor.
Yeah, when Dan Hartman calls me, I can be like, sorry, going in the tunnel.
Get a little long winded, Dan.
Clever, yes. Yeah, it's our speakers in here, so it's probably the.
It's gonna be kinda hard for me then to do.
She can hear us.
He can hear you.
Yeah, we just can't hear you guys. There she is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Sound fantastic.
All right.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order now that technology is our friend. We have one item on the agenda for the work session, and it's the discussion of the three-month FYI 2024 Budget General Fund. We broke up the budget discussions a little bit for two reasons. One, we have a new finance director, and two, people got really bored last time we talked for three hours about finance. So breaking this up a little bit, so it's all yours.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and the board for allowing me to present first quarter financial results tonight. We are, like the mayor just said, we are uh, slightly departing from what you're used to. Tonight, we will only be going through the general fund. Uh, and then next March, or on March nineteenth, we'll address all the remaining funds. I think Linda is gonna be, here we go. Um, just an overview of the, of the budget figures right now. Twenty-three percent of the wage related expenses has occurred, which is right on par with where we're at as far as budget. Um, you, this is very much like what you're gonna see, uh, or what you have been used to as far as some of the graphs and whatnot. Um, we will do, we will continue to do like a five-year look back as well as a trend line five-year forward as well. For the general fund, just real quick before we get into other accounts, we are projecting a slight increase from what was budgeted for twenty-four. That increase is a net of about two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. You can see that the percent of budget received at this point through first quarter is already at thirty-seven percent. Two factors regarding that. First one is the property tax. Property tax accounts for approximately seventeen percent of our total revenue streams. But on average, we receive about ninety-two percent of that property tax within first quarter. So that does skew the, the revenue just a little bit. Also helping out that is the sales and use tax, which is thirty-six percent of our budget for revenue and has performed quite well this year so far. Expenses, we did trim up expenses just a little bit, only because the percentage to date was a little higher than our average trending for the last three years. That bottom section there is the capital projects that the general fund will be um, doing this year, or starting this year at least. And then we'll get into property tax. This is a snapshot of the property tax revenue for the first quarter. As mentioned, um, on average, ninety-two percent has been received per the budget. This year, ninety-three-point-three percent has been received, which is slightly higher. Um, in the last five years or so, our average increase has been just under seven percent year over year. Next page gives a quick visual of what sales, or the property tax has been over the last three years. As you can see, the projection, we are keeping the projection at the same as budget. Um, we're, we're pretty close. Uh, not feeling real comfortable about going too much higher on the projection side at this point. It'll be, we'll have a much clearer picture after we get second quarter in and have an idea of what else trickled in after um, the main distribution from Clay County. Um, the increase from two thousand and three actual to twenty-twenty-four budget was only three-point-two percent. Um, obviously, I wasn't here during that timeframe, but because that was such a slight increase, that played into our projection just staying where our budget is. Now we can look at the five-year look back. It's steadily been increasing. Um, we had our largest year between twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, where it increased almost eleven percent. Um, but like I said before, over the last five years, that has increased an average of about six-point-nine percent. The next, we will look at sales tax. Uh, the one percent sales tax, the city levies two-point-five percent sales tax. One percent of that goes to the general fund. And then you also have three other buckets, which are the transportation sales tax, parks and stormwater sales tax, and capital improvement sales tax. Each of those funds get point-five percent, making up that two-point-five percent. Um, like we, like I mentioned before, we have earned during the first quarter, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. That is a slight increase. Um, and you will see here on the next page, or that we, on the next page, yep, that we did increase that projection slightly by about fifty-three thousand dollars. This is a, a pretty good visual of how the sales tax has been coming in over the last three years. It has steadily been increasing and uh, really see no stop to it. Next one is a trend line of the sales tax. As you can see, we did have a pretty good uh, spike in twenty-twenty, physical year in twenty-twenty. And then we did, although we did increase, we slightly slowed down a little bit as we went through the COVID timeframe. And now we are definitely picking back up. Next slide is use tax. Use tax is very interesting. We have done very well in use tax. And just a reminder, use tax is basically everything you purchase online. The retailers submit on their own. This isn't necessarily coming from the state of Missouri, so it can come from anywhere. So when we receive it, typically Missouri gives us our revenue a month late. Um, sales tax can be two months, three months, just kinda depending on, on the vendor itself. Um, a couple of things playing into this is inflation economic-wise, as far as increasing the cost of goods. And during this first quarter, we also hit the holiday period. So a lot of these purchases were more than likely Christmas gifts and stuff. So, um, we did increase this budget. As you can see on the next page, uh, we increased it approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, first quarter revenue was two-twenty-eight. Uh, I definitely do not feel comfortable going times in that by four and hitting a million dollars. Um, but we definitely believe we will beat budget. Um, and hopefully, we will, we will be above the two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand.
Rick, if I can jump in here, just for one thing, as, as Rick outlined, knowing when retailers are gonna submit this tax is, that's an unknown. Last year, first, second, and into the third quarter, we were trailing. We would, sales, our use tax didn't seem to be coming in. We received some big payments late in the summer, and that helped us get to where we were. So we think that's maybe leveled out now. So trying to be conservative in the way we're projecting that, like Rick said, that two-twenty-eight that we've had so far probably makes up. It, it's a lot more than it was this time last year, probably in part because of that timing. We'll continue to monitor that, though.
Right. Second quarter will be a big determination on how this is gonna play out. The next is the trend line for the city use tax. This has, this, this one is definitely a good visual. We've had for the last five years, some very good increases in the use tax. Um, from twenty-two to twenty-three, that increased over fifteen percent. So our, our projection, like I said, I didn't wanna go much higher. Um, I definitely have a gut feeling that we may. Um, but our projection is gonna be just slightly higher than what our actual was last year. And just with first quarter, it, it's always limited data on how to project for the rest of the year. Interest income, this is, this is also a, a pretty big bucket of revenue stream right now. Um, we are definitely going above our budget projection of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars. We have revised that to hit four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we have a couple of things going on. Um, our interest that we earned at, at the bank is based off the ninety-day T-bill. Um, since April of twenty-three, that has been above five percent. So last year, we did not capture the full five percent that we can with our funds in the bank. Um, this year, depending on how rates go, um, we should be pretty close to capturing most of that. Um, also with the interest income, our CDs, we do have eight CDs in varying amounts, around two-hundred thousand dollars. Um, all of those are between four and five percent as well. One thing, um, that I do wanna point out is, on this next slide, you can definitely see the increases. Um, from May twenty-two to October of twenty-two, that T-bill rate was point-eight-five to four percent. So as soon as that got close to five percent, we can definitely see some, some major revenue coming into the city. And of course, this is all, we, we don't know what's gonna happen the rest of the year. Um, latest and greatest from the Fed is, uh, they're expecting three rate cuts of a quarter percent. Um, right now, they're expecting the first one in May. But the economy is still going strong. Uh, whether or not that happens in May, um, we'll wait and see. But they are anticipating some rate cuts this year. Building permit revenue. Uh, this is the one account that we did decrease budget for, for the projection for this year. Our original budget was two-hundred thousand dollars. We have decreased that to fifty thousand dollars. Um, to date, we have brought in just over eleven thousand dollars. A couple of things about first quarter. First quarter is also winter. Um, people are not pulling residential or commercial permits as often in the wintertime. Also, you have economic factors, um, just what we just talked about. Interest is high. Um, and the unknown, just like we were talking about with the Fed rate. Um, that is definitely playing into people's determination to build both in the residential and commercial. We do have some anticipated projects coming up, One-Ten Smithville and Second Creek. Um, if we get some of those going, especially One-Ten Smithville, we, we will probably beat our projection that you'll see on the next page of fifty thousand. This, this is, uh, what we've done for the budget. Again, I wasn't here for the budget, but the two-hundred thousand for that budget was in anticipation. We're making budget, we'll be going into the budget process here in, in the next month or so. So this was a year ago when we were trying to decide on building permits. Second quarter will, will probably give us a lot of information. All right, little overview of the budget for the general fund now. Um, as you can see in the total revenues line, we did budget less revenue than what was actual for twenty-three. Those decreases were in interest earnings and use tax for the most part, which is ironically the two buckets that we did increase for our projections for twenty-four. Um, if you go over to the right and look at our projections, we are going up with a net of two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. That is taken into consideration, the building, or the um, permits, building permits are decreased. We do have a pretty good increase in expenses for the budget for twenty-four. And this is due to a lot of capital improvement projects happening. And then if we look at the bottom line, with the net of the building permits, we are expecting as of right now, almost a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand increase to the general fund. Any questions so far?
Very good.
I have, I have a couple, but I, I'm compiling them, so keep going.
Okay, all right. Well, we're gonna switch it up here a little bit. We have, on the next slide, we have a, a couple mid-year impacts. Um, this probably should have been written mid-calender or mid-year impacts. This will be affecting our last four months of personnel expenses. The first item was previously discussed during the twenty-twenty-four budget process when staff proposed revisiting the retirement and hat enhancement mid-year after looking at first quarter revenue performance. The city's current loggers retirement program called L-seven has a multiplier of one-point-five percent and an employee contribution rate of two percent. Staff is recommending moving to a program called L-twelve that increases the multiplier to one-point-seven-five percent and keeps the two percent employee contribution the same. This is an enhancement for all staff members. And this will, this would have a July first impact going forward. The second item that has come up is a collective bargaining agreement between city management and the West Central Missouri Regional Lodge Number Fifty, which is a police union. On February twenty-sixth of twenty-four, the city received notice, the bargaining unit members ratified the tentative agreement. And it is on the upcoming agenda for board consideration. This is also a July first impact. Down below there, in the blue, we highlighted this blue. This originally said the general fund impact was seventy-eight thousand dollars. That has been revised. The seventy-eight thousand is the impact to all funds. And the impact to the general fund is sixty-six thousand. And remember, we just got done discussing how we expect a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand increase in our general fund. The sixty-six thousand would be absorbed by that. The staff, our, city staff is comfortable that we can absorb all this financial impact for the rest of twenty-four and going forward. With this is a proposed loggers timeframe. Uh, March nineteenth, we would have to get this advertised to um, show what the cost upgrade would be. On May seventh, we would bring this to the board for consideration. And on July first, it would become effective.
I'm gonna jump in here real quickly and, and um, expand just a little bit on what Rick has done in outlining very well some stuff. He was not here for, for discussions. Um, the loggers timeline, it's shown here. If you'll recall, effective January one of twenty-twenty-three, we changed the percentage contribution of employees. There was a timeline we had to follow with that. Um, we get an actuarial from loggers. And if we are intending to make any changes to our retirement program, we have to actually advertise that fact. We'll note it first in the city administrator's report for the March nineteenth meeting, and we will post that to the city website. And that outlines our intent to make a change to our retirement program. And then a resolution will come to the board in May approving that. There's a, a time period that um, information, the advertisement has to be posted for, I believe it's forty-five days, Gina. Um, and so that's out there. Then the board is able to take action um, on May seventh approving that resolution. And at that point in time, we'll also have a couple more months of information on our revenues, so we can continue to provide updates to the board on where we are there in that. Hopefully, we'll see continued enhancement to, to those revenue projections. And then that July first effective date, so anyone who retires after July first would automatically retire at that higher multiplier. So somebody who is in the organization right now and retires after July one this year, they would retire at the multiplier that is a higher level. That will be a benefit to our existing employees and those looking at retirement. It also helps us in recruitment of employees. Our, our loggers level um, still lags behind some of the other cities in the area. So income, when people are looking at jobs in local government, um, we are not as appealing as other communities because our retirement system is not as um, robust. So that's why we focused on this. As Rick also highlighted a little bit, um, you'll recall, we talked about this at the retreat last year, some enhance, enhancements to employee compensation and retirement. But then at that point in time, the board said, hey, what is it that employees want? We did talk to employees throughout the organization. Um, the, the majority of people expressed an interest in enhancements to retirement. We did have, there's a lot of, of discussion both ways on this. Um, there are some departments that might have more of a focus in other areas, but we wanna be able to move forward with the enhancements to retirement and look at compensation as we move forward. Gina, did you have anything else to add on that? So staff strongly recommends that we move forward in that area, and unless we hear differently from the board, we'll follow this timeline.
Thank you. Any questions?
That brings us to the last slide, which, doubt questions went really quick. Um.
We'll have some more questions.
The city is projecting revenues, let's just conclude, the city is projecting revenues um, to exceed budget by what we talked about, a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. And we do project um, that sales tax, use tax, and interest income will be um, the driving force to that as well. Um, hopefully, items such as building permits and property tax also come above what we are projecting right now at first quarter. Um, like I said, in second quarter, we will have a lot more information to bring to you to make that assumption or make that projection. And lastly, um, expenditures, city is always looking at uh, keeping expenditures low, so this is always on our radar. And that is it.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, uh, Rick, for um, presentation. So the, the, the first is, do, we're gonna, you, you say the property tax i- is gonna hit budget. Do we have an idea of delinquencies and um, kind of what that impact would be if, if it's minimal or if it's something we should be concerned about as far as real estate taxes are concerned?
I do not have that information in front of me. Um, I, as always, that is always an issue with property tax. I can, I can do some digging and come back and report um, what that has been in the past and where, where it stands right now.
Okay, no, no, that's fair. Absolutely. I'd just like to see kind of what, what that trend is maybe over the last three years.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we've ever drilled down that far, but.
We have not. That's what I was gonna say, and appreciate the question, and um.
It's a good thing to look at.
That's, I think, something that Rick can absolutely do. We just haven't drilled down to that point yet in his month a little over a month, or right out of month here, so.
Today is the month.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, nope.
That's great.
Typically, by this time of year, we've collected ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. We've been over budget, so it's been minimal at the county level.
Okay, very good. Um, the second question is on the use tax. You, you had said that you, you feel like it's primarily due to inflation. Um, a couple of things come to, to, to thought on that. Number one is, um, our first quarter is over Christmas, traditionally.
Right.
And, and so, um, do you, do we, do we know, um, or can we see if it's, if it's just consumers purchasing more online versus, um, you know, going to a store? I, I don't know if we can.
That is use tax. Use tax is strictly online, right, right, right. So.
And we've seen a growth in actual businesses submitting over the last three years as well because of the wafer decision.
Okay, right.
Seen that as well with, you know, the number of businesses submitting.
No, no, absolutely. I just, I just wondered if it was more people buying online as well. I, I understand the inflation is.
It definitely is. Inflation is not all of that, that increase.
Right.
It's, it's definitely a move to buying online.
Okay.
And I think the other thing.
Being convenient and everything.
We've, we've had conversations about this, um, Rick and I, and then in the finance committee as well. And I think we all see it as well. Um, if I know that I'm short on something that I typically run to the store to grab, perhaps a superstore, it's a lot easier to click online and stay in my pajamas in my warm house or my cool house rather than have to run out and do it. And I know, you know, it's gotten to the point sometimes too, where if I order it this morning, I can have it tonight, so.
Seeing that.
There's, it's the convenience. I think a lot of us are seeing that. So um, I think there's a certain amount that's gonna be there to say it'll be interesting to see where the plateau is.
Good. And, and just kind of, I, I'm not overly concerned. Um, we, we probably are a little over optimistic in the building permit side just based on kind of where interest rate environment is, and I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about that. It'll be interesting to see how that turns out the rest of the year, but um, I, I, I'm glad to see that we've kind of looked at those projections and we're still gonna come out okay. Um, and, you, you know, I'm comfortable with, if it ends up being a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, that'll be great.
Yeah. And I do think, and, and I think Jack would, would agree that, that the current estimate probably is very conservative. And we kind of wanted to be that way. We want, want to see that. I, I, I'd rather shoot Dan and, and, and see more. Um, part of that is timing. Like we've said too, we've seen as with our construction projects, there are delays, and, and that's having an impact on, on construction as well in those property tax values. We know there are developments that will be coming online, and we'll see those.
I think, and our, the budget reflected a couple of times, five years ago, I think we were more permit, building permits than use tax. So it's nice to have a consistent revenue stream and not one that's dependent on somebody building a house. Plus, you had Clay Creek come in right quick, a hundred-and-twenty-eight units.
Boom, yeah.
Yeah.
I also wanna highlight one thing that Rick and I talked about today too, and not stealing your thunder here, Rick. These are our major funding sources. There are other sources, and Rick and I had the conversation this morning. One of the items that we haven't looked at here are franchise fees, because those have either remained flat or gone down slightly. And he and I talked about the fact, I think over the next few weeks, we wanna take a look at that as well to make sure we understand where we are on those, in part because of infla, you know, franchise taxes are those fees that we collect on um, you. You know, franchise taxes are those fees that we collect on utilities. And there's, but there's telephone service, which we've seen a dramatic drop there. But with inflation, we're seeing higher gas bills and higher electric bills. So we may have a little bit of an an increase there, but that portion of the total revenues has gone down as a percentage overall. So we've kind of left that out of this analysis. So the impact is not as large, but I think we still need to take a look at it and understand that.
Right, right.
And then just finally, the the L twelve, I'm comfortable with. I mean, I I think we've talked about it, as Cynthia alluded to in in the retreat last year. But I'm not sure where the rest of the board is, but I'm comfortable with that moving forward.
Yep. So if their employees requested, survey says, right, Gina?
Yes.
Any other questions? Twenty-eight minutes. I guess we can take a break. Motion to adjourn. Have a second? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, see y'all at seven.